Damage to the interior of the house. And then like the last two years, we've, the societies-
Why wasn't the damage on the interior submitted with the, with that one?
Well, it was because at that time, we were gonna, we re-ren- we renovated the, the house, the society. We put several hundred thousand dollars into the renovation of the house. Of course, when we re-ren- uh, we did the house, we took care of that particular damage inside the house. That was all we've done. So, we actually spent money, that twelve, uh, we spent more than, of course, more than that money on the interior of the house when we redid it, so.
Do y'all historically pay for repairs or remodels of the house?
Yes, we have. I mean, basically, your insurance covers kind of the outside of the house, you know, damage to the outside. The interior, we've, uh, we've, like I say, we put, uh, in the last two years, I won't give you the exact number, but it's, oh, you know, several hundred thousand dollars into redoing the house that the society has paid us with.
I'd have to verify on the coverage for the, the property because, um, I'm, I don't know for sure if we have contents covered or in, inside, but I would think it would be just like any of our other buildings where it would cover anything, but I don't know for sure without pulling the policy.
We need to look at the policy, because normally, a structured policy like that will cover interior and exterior damage, so. Yeah, I think we need to review that policy, Catherine. See why, i-if we didn't get that-
Right. It, it, yeah, and I believe it's the entire, um, but I will double check in terms of that. But regardless of what that is, it's, it's a matter of, uh, the twelve hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-nine cents and what we want to do with that amount.
As Catherine alluded to, I don't know if the tax court would give them that much.
They, they can if they give us like an invoice, right?
Okay, now here's something that I'd like to roll, okay, seven B, discuss and take up and take possible action on Jailhouse Museum holding account. If we can, if we do anything, would it roll the twelve hundred and ninety dollars in with that? Because that's gonna be used, that's what's gonna be used for replacing windows and upgrading or not repairing the Jailhouse Museum.
Well, that was our, that was the society's plan. We got the money, we were gonna give the money to-
Well, let me, let's move, if you want to move on to that-
Well, that's kind of, can we combine those two?
Yeah, mhm. So, the second account is the holding account for the Jailhouse Museum. Again, there was an insurance claim, uh, back in two thousand seventeen with TAC, with Texas Association of Counties. We received twenty-four thousand, five dollars and sixty cents. We then turned around and, and had a lot of repairs done by Fisher Heck, which, who was the architect, uh, leaving, uh, remaining funds of twelve thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents. Mr. Ayers came, um, to explain that they do want to upgrade or replace windows in the jail. Uh, I recommended to him that he would, uh, to bring me a proposal, uh, so that I could present it to the court, um, so that we could use these up to this amount to pay for those, uh, uh, upgrades or windows.
And when was, when was this about the windows?
It has not been done yet.
No, I mean, you're mean about the windows.
Uh, Mr. Ayers is in my office at least two times a month to discuss this.
Judge, I thought we did the windows.
We did-
They're working on them. They're, the, the windows are a, a pretty big task.
Well, I know that.
And what it is, and it's expensive task that we, there's very little money to do, and that's what we're trying to do. We, there's a new roof on it to stop the leak. We're trying to prevent the deck, further damage, so we get the, the roof fixed, so it's fixed. Now, we get the windows fixed. That way, the water will quit coming in, and then we can finally concentrate on repairing the jailhouse. We send it back to break and use as a museum.
But the twelve thousand is just a drop in the bucket, part fifty from the windows.
Oh, this is a drop in the bucket as compared, compared to what's gonna be needed-
Yeah.
-to repair the Jailhouse Museum.
What I don't have, or what I don't know is like an, an official proposal, which I've asked Mr. Ayers for, but, uh, and you can speak to that, it's regarding, I guess, a contractor that we're going to use, that was, couldn't provide a proposal or something of that nature, I wasn't sure.
Uh, well, the contractor we have is, of course, he's done work to the interiors, repaired the plaster and everything else, but for us and the society has paid for all the interior work so far. And that's been like twenty-seven thousand dollars we put into that. But you can't go any further with the windows, because they leak. We were gonna paint the walls, do the floors and, uh, but we can't do anything until the windows are fixed, because the water's coming through the windows, would damage whatever we did to the interior. The contractor we have, uh, works by, I mean, be- because of a renovation like these of old windows, you really can't give, quote, a lump sum estimate. So, he's working body hour, thirty dollars a man hour for doing the work plus, uh, materials at cost. So, uh, what we would-
Everybody's gonna work on the windows.
What we would propose to do would be is, we could pay the contractor, uh, and then re, we could, if you would reimburse us then for what we've spent, you know, paying him to do the windows, it'll be more than twelve thousand. We'll invoice up, uh, one reimbursement up to the amount of this insurance money, twelve thousand-
Now, I'm just not, I, I'm not, and I guess I'm just not clear why we can't get an estimate.
Well, we can get an estimate if you wanna, but I don't think, it's not gonna be a lump sum, it's not gonna be a proposal where this is what we're gonna pay. You want, with each window, you'll have to dig into and see if you have to replace the whole window, part of the window. If anybody's done an old house, you know, you can't, I mean, you can finish lump sum, but there's gonna be a lot of contingency, and you could pay a lot more than really what it would cost. Well, I can get a written estimate of what the, I mean, he says it's thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, then, of course, this money will only cover part of, part of the windows.
And so, would you all then proceed with paying the rest? I guess, as well, I want to make sure that we're not gonna turn over the funds and then the work not be completed if we go that route. So, are we gonna wait till the windows are replaced and then, then reimburse? Or are we going to do it ahead of time?
I would, I would think we would, uh, put an RFP out, refresh the forms. I'm sure there's more than one person that can do that renovation.
I think it has to be approved by the historical commission.
We've got to have somebody that the Texas Historical Commission will allow. And this guy that, uh-
Doug Fahey.
Doug Fahey, he has their blessing. So, um, it's not that we can, we can do that, but it's gonna cost us. We had, the reason we've only got twelve thousand left out of that twenty-four thousand is we paid an architect to come in and draw some pictures for us. And he did not fix one of the windows. So, we have got the blessing to go, to proceed without an architect, which is almost unheard of. It's dead in time, and that's the reason we're proceeding with Doug Fahey and going like this. This is the most economical way. My deal is, let's, I'd like to see this happen. Take A and B, combine them together, set them in account, and whenever Mr. Fahey can get in there, because he said, you know, this window may cost fifteen hundred to repair, and this window may not cost that much. But he's gonna go window by window and start with the ones that are-
The worst.
-need the most work, that, that are, that are leaking, this is one we better have done. And that may, this is not gonna take care of all the windows at all.
Judge, I'm commending that, that we approve combining A and B together.
Can we do that?
What's that?
I mean, can we, uh, can we combine the two? I thought the Renshaw House had to be kept separate. It doesn't?
I mean, it's, it's, it's historical, okay? This is, this is all for the historical, the Wilson County Historical Commission.
And if we just give them the money, like, we just give the historical the twelve hundred dollars, they can go use it wherever they want to. Or is, but I'd, I'm kinda like a judge, put it in on the museum window, per, if they give us the invoices.
Hang on just a second.
Judge Kennedy? Uh, Sarah Kennedy, and my mom is Lawanna Nunam Lewis. She's the president of the Historical Society, as well as the Historical Commission. She's out of town today, and so she asked if I could come and speak for her on her behalf on this issue. And she said that she and Clarence had spoken about this at length, and she would very much appreciate if it could move in that direction, because the Historical Society has been very diligent about keeping up the Dewise Renshaw House and taking on sort of the lion's share of everything. And if you've been out there recently, you would just, they don't like your socks up. It will knock your socks up, how beautiful it is and how well they have redone it. And Mr. Fahey is absolutely the best, and him doing this at cost is just amazing for us. So, she said that Clarence has really thought through this, that the commission has thought through it, the executive board has thought through it, and that what Clarence is being, bringing is the best possible action that can be done at this time. And she apologized that she is not able to be here today, so I'm standing and speaking on her behalf. But we would very much, um, and I'm a member of the Historical Society, but we would very much appreciate, you know, your all's very, um, careful attention to this and expedite as quickly as possible, because worse weather is coming. And the more quickly we can get it done, the more money we'll save in the long run.
I don't think we're denying any of that, so I agree with that. All I'm asking for is like we, everything else for us, we have a proposal that we present to court for approval before we release any funds. So, that's, I just want to make sure that all our I's are dotted and T's are crossed before I tell someone, yes, we can use this money to do that.
And I guess my comment is just, I thought our agreement when the house was given to the county that there was some conditions that had to be met. And I would have assumed one of those was if there's money in an account for the house, it had to be used on the house. Is that not the case?
Yes, if, I mean, under that, under the Renshaw account, but this is insurance money that's left over.
From the Renshaw-
Okay, from the Renshaw house. Now.
So, I don't know why, I mean, I, I, we can leave the twelve hundred dollars in the Renshaw House holding account, so that if there are repairs to be done, that they want to submit invoices for, for reimbursement or for repair, we can, we have that money that we can do it. And then the same thing for the jail. I'm not convinced why we need to combine the two, because if all the money is spent on the Jailhouse Museum, there will be no money available for the Renshaw House if there are any future repairs besides item C when we talk about the CD, so.
And when the Renshaw House people, the representatives of the original donor of the house, when that's reported to them, does that not matter to them on whether we spend it on the house or the jail?
I have the agreement, um, between the, uh, our county clerk was so diligent in getting me all of this information, but-
Can I, like, regarding the money, yes, the, the house is supported, the maintenance of the house is supported, utilities and so forth is supported by a trust. And that money is given to the society, and we administer, you know, all the repairs and so forth, look after that. And that's trust money, that can only be spent on a house. But in this case, I, we've ch- I've checked with the trustees, and this money is not coming from the trustees, so the trustees don't really have any control over this money, because it's insurance type money. It's not money given by the trust to the house, so it's independent. And the trust, trustees could care less what happens to this money, you're gonna stop-
They, they don't pay the premium on the insurance?
No, no, we, we, the county pays. We have, the society has an individual, you know, liability, personal liability insurance policy, and we have an individual po- policy for the contents of the house. We have maintained an insurance policy on the contents of the house. The county has an insurance policy that covers basically the structure against hazard, you know, wind, wind hail and damage and so forth, but-
Well, at the very least, I would change the name of that account to something like miscellaneous proceeds from Renshaw House, instead of generically calling it a holding account. Do you see what I'm saying? Because the, the trustees look at this, is what I'm saying, um-
But they don't even know what money we have left over.
No, and they don't, like I said, we talked, I've talked to them about, I mean, you're taking my word for that, of course, but, yeah, I've talked to them, and they said, well, the money did not come from them. They only, they only have concerns, control over the money that comes from the trust to the society for maintenance of the house. This money is insurance money, so it doesn't-
The only thing that we would, could or should, could possibly use it for is to apply the, the premium for the next insurance policy.
And I think that would be the fair enough thing to do, tax payers.
Well, I would call it insurance account or something, and not holding account. Holding account sounds like a big account that you're gonna hold lots of things in. And, but if it were named more specifically insurance proceeds or something like that-
Well, we get, it's, it's titled holding account for Dewise Renshaw House, because insurance money may not be the only money that we drop in that bucket. So, that's why it's just a holding account for the Renshaw House, whether the money comes from insurance or oil and gas, or it just depends on, on what it is. Historically, it has been only insurance money.
Does it, does it have all the gas fund that funds it?
It does, and that's item C.
Which we have no control of.
Yeah.
We have no, we have no control over the-
All the mental money goes to the trust, back to the trust itself. And then the trust, if they have, the IRS requires them, if there's so much money in it, the IRS requires the trust then to give that money to the society for maintenance of the house.
All the more reason I think that the leftover insurance funds should go back to the taxpayers.
It's lumped in with all of our-
We got twelve hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-nine cents under the Renshaw House account. We've got twelve thousand, I'm sorry, twelve hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-nine cents in the Renshaw House, and twelve thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents for the Jailhouse Museum account. Yes. Yes. It's up to the court, and it has nothing to do with, unless the court had agreed at some point in time what to do with insurance proceeds. Correct. It's strictly up to the board. Judge Jackson, do we know what the premium is for the Renshaw House?
No, because it's lumped in with all of our buildings.
And as far as it going to the taxpayers, I think the sooner that the, uh, Jailhouse Museum gets finished, the taxpayers, our community is going to love having that building accessible again. I think it's-
Well, I would agree, in different financial times right now.
Right.
We have a lot of people who aren't working, haven't worked for months, just still having to pay their tax bill. So, I think any excess funds that we receive from an insurance plan go back into the general fund that the county, you don't believe yet some of this, because I, a lot of people would, would rather see their, you know, taxes stay where they're at, especially in the financial situation they're all in now. So, I think it's only fair that the county put the funds back in the general fund.
Could any excess of the premium, if it's figured out, then be rolled over into the jailhouse? If we could figure out what that amount of premium is?
That's a separate thing. That was from that, that house, I think the money should go back into the, into the county. I mean, if we figure out the big premium's four hundred dollars, what eight hundred dollars gonna do? I would rather use it to help the taxpayers, and all the taxpayers right now, than, than not.
Judge, I made a motion that we, we give, give it to them. They aren't gonna give us invoices, like what, no thing with the jail.
Could you say that again? I mean, maybe take off your mask.
I'll make a motion that we allow these funds, leftover insurance money, to be given to the Historical Society to repair the fund or the museum, uh, upon they give the ordinary invoices for this amount of money. Did you hear that, Commissioner Wiley?
Are you saying the two?
Yes, I did.
Yes, okay. Combine the two.
I'll take the, the motion if you need a second.
Okay. We've got-
The twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four cents. What was the other one?
One thousand.
Thousand two- One thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Fifty-nine cents, and twelve thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and fifty-four cents.
Sixty-four cents.
Sixty-four.
Mm-hmm. You wanna combine both of those amounts?
That's what his motion is. We got a motion and a second.
Can I have clarification? Are we going to pay the contractor directly, or am I going to reimburse the Historical Society?
Oh, they give you the invoices for the contractor.
I'm sorry?
They give you the invoices to pay the contractor.
Pay on a, pay on invoice, yes.
To the contractor directly?
Or either to the contractor.
If you don't get an invoice, you don't pay.
Okay. But Judge, am I clear, it's filed and litigated?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Have we got any more discussion? We got a motion and a second to combine A and B and to pay it out with invoices at, as repair to the Jailhouse Museum.
Yeah, I would, I would make that contingent upon the fact that we could do that legally.
Okay, Catherine's research. Add that to it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Two, Gomes and Hayek opposed. Okay, let's move on to seven C, discussing take possible action on Dewise Renshaw House CD.
Yeah, so, many, many years ago, there was the original CD that was opened, uh, again, related to insurance proceeds that came in. Why the CD was open is what is the unsolved mystery in terms of, uh, we're assuming that that money was received in, and we put it into a CD so that it could, uh, you know, gain a little bit of interest, because there's not a lot of action moving on that, uh, house. But nonetheless, we also received a check back in two thousand thirteen from Vistar, Vistar Oil Company, uh, Vistar Oil Texas, which is, uh, our payment for surface, uh, service rights. Right. From oil and gas minerals. And that check was payable to Wilson County, and so we combined the leftover insurance money back in, it was way in the nineties, with the sixty-six hundred dollars. And so, we now have a total amount of nine thousand, eleven dollars and ninety-five cents sitting in the CD at the bank. Nine thousand, eleven dollars and ninety-five cents. Again, this is money that belongs to Wilson County, sitting in a CD. It matures in June of two thousand twenty-one. And Mr. Ayers has asked about how the Renshaw House can access that money as well. So, I will leave it up to you to decide.
Okay, sixty-six hundred came from the damages?
No, sir. Sixty-six hundred dollars was the check from Vistar Oil.
That's damages. That's for surface water damages, yes.
Oh, okay, well, I, it doesn't-
Well, they went out and built their pad, and they paid for that. Uh, and what's the other part from?
From insurance, uh, from some insurance money back from the nineties on a- It was leftover insurance proceeds that we had from an old, old CD back from the nineties. And it was like two thousand dollars and change. I have that original CD, but it was all insurance related.
Okay, part of it was insurance related, but the sixty-six hundred was damages for?
I, I didn't say damages, it was just from Vistar Oil Company, and then I have a copy of the lease agreement.
We don't have a right to anything but damages.
Yeah, so.
Uh, all the trust and everything else. All we have is the surface water accident, the liability to come with that.
So, there's that nine thousand dollars sitting in the CD, which, I mean, we can, uh, we can wait till June and decide what we want to do with it at that time, since it doesn't mature until June of two thousand twenty-one. Um, I think there's just a, a minimal, uh, early redemption fee if we decided we wanted to do it before then. Um, or we can leave it in there and just let it continue to draw interest.
Been there for a while, I believe.
That's what I think. I'd, let's leave it till, before June, we can refer this again for that particular item?
And the CD has the county's name on it or not?
Absolutely, yeah. And for, and ever, all the research that we've been able to find, it has been funded with, with county money based on insurance proceeds. And that was one of the things Mr. Ayers was waiting on me for, is trying to find, well, who, who opened the CD and where did the money come from, and that's what we found.
From that, from what we got, that was the only revenue income, anything Wilson County has ever gotten from the Renshaw House, the Renshaw property. That, in my opinion, would be good to use against our premiums right there, because we have to pay the insurance.
That's what.
Uh, now, the other two thousand dollars, or whatever it was, three thousand, two thousand something, I'm not, you know, that could be, you know, we could discuss that, though, in, uh, April, May or June, uh, what to do with that. But that's just my opinion for right now. But one thing, and I want to go to Mr. Ayers, and I know we've talked about it before, and Judge Kennedy, uh, where you can relate to your mother, is if we can somehow transfer that property either back to the trust, to the Historical Commission, or however, I'm, as far as myself, I'm not representing the whole commissioner's court, but we could probably get to there. Uh, in some way, somehow, look at doing that.
Now, what property are you talking about?
The Renshaw property.
Renshaw.
In Renshaw House.
The county owns the property out there.
Yes.
If you remember when we went through the-
Yes.
The lease agreement and all that.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not so sure I want to give it up, not, the county give it up.
Well, we don't, we're not exactly giving it up, because the organization, uh, is there because of the county and the state historical interest. So, I don't know that we would be giving it up, so to speak.
It will still be out there.
Well, it would remove, yeah, it would remove the county's responsibilities of the insurance and repairs and anything associated with the actual building if we went. Now, Ms. Eva pulled the actual deed and the lease, the lease agreement between Wilson County and the Renshaw House, and so, I mean, it's a lot of pages in here to read through on what we can and can't do. What I, uh, mentioned to the judge is, from what I can understand, if that's something that we decided to do, it would have to be turned back over to the trust, and the trust would then decide on what to do with it.
Well, I think that would be a terrible mistake.
Okay. Here's my deal. All we have out of that property is liability. We have no revenue, we have no nothing, we pay the premiums on every year, that's it. Any, any revenue that comes off that property goes to the Wilson County Historical Commission or society.
Well, and they exist because of Wilson County.
Okay. Here, we got two things. We've got the society, and we've got the commission.
I know, I know.
Now, Wilson County, we're more or less obligated to support the commission.
Well, I think the fact of when the society was started and the reason it was started, and it wasn't called the commission, because at that time, Texas law didn't require it to be, but it acted as a, the commission. And, uh, the original gift is, was a private family, and we are, and the person who gave, made the gift loved the house and wanted, had certain things she wanted for the house, and the Historical Commission and the county have done a wonderful job of doing what she wanted. But we are quickly gonna get down to her great grandchildren or her great grandnieces and nephews, who may or may not care anything about the house. So, I think if you approach anything like not dealing with the trust, they're gonna come back and say, you haven't done what y'all promised, give us the whole thing back.
Hey, that's, that's kind of my plan.
Well, is that what y'all want, to give it back to the family?
They would lose the historical-
Not when the society was still.
I want the society or the Historical Commission. I don't think we can give it to the society, but we can give it to the commission.
The commission is us. The commission would not- The commission is us. The commission would not exist but for Wilson County and the law providing that we have to have a commission.
Okay, here's my deal. Is the commission, it's complicated, or is the society getting the revenue from the rental property?
No, that's okay.
The society is. The society is like the fundraising arm of the commission. I mean, that's where the commission is going to do a project.
Okay. Commission's got a plan.
It looks at a different target. There's who I'd like to, I'd like to see give to the society.
And I've talked, and I've talked to the trustees about it, and of course, they first said, you've got to make up your mind, do you really want it? I mean, if the county gives it to you, does the, does the society want it? They haven't looked into all the legal implications of the county giving it back.
The trust probably identifies with it, and it can't, the trust is set up.
Well, it's in the original warranty deed or whatever, when the house is given.
But if the, if the person, if the entity that it's giving to violates what the agreement said, then those individual trustees can come back and say, we want our great-grandmother's land and, and house back. So you have to be really careful unless you want to give it to them. And I don't know that we can.
I'd like to see the society with, they're, Wilson County Historical Society, they're the ones that can, they're the, the ones that can reap the, I said reap the, you know, can get revenue from the property.
But the revenue, I mean, everybody thinks it's big revenue, but maybe it's three thousand a year is what you make. I mean, you look at all the-
At one time, it was quite a bit more. That's because of the, the mineral rights, the oil.
Yeah, that, that money goes directly to the trust. It doesn't go to the society, the mineral rights. What kind of revenue is that being earned? Well, right now, it's basically nothing. I mean, the wells are dry. They're not pumping anymore, so. And once, when they first started, yeah, but now it's really over. We're not getting anything extra from the trustees for oil and gas. We get, right now, they give us eleven hundred a month to maintain the house, but, but there's no, based on the last meeting we had with them in October, they, you know, it's back to nothing, basically. The, the oil revenue's all, all improper, so. They're a little bit outside where all the oil and gas is. We're too far towards the water.
Away from this was something, because this is not part of the act of the law.
I'll make a motion to leave the CDs on the windshell.
Did it what?
Leave the CDs.
Leave it?
Leave the CDs.
June twenty, twenty-one.
Until June? Motion by Commissioner Gómez.
Wait, what would be the status, Howard, if you don't mind me asking? Want to mature, what do you want to do with the money there?
It's going to be up to the, we can court when they're here to discuss that. It's going to be up to the, the other court, and the twenty twenty-one gets to that in June.
Yeah, we can, we can approach it again and, and we can do it.
Works for me.
Motion by Commissioner Gómez. Second by Commissioner Fowle, that we leave the CD as it is. We're now, is there any more discussion? Do you understand that, Commissioner Wiley?
I do.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carried.
One question I have, Mr. Ayers and maybe Kathy, is can we check with the oil company to come in and clean up that damage, like with the oil wells and all that, pipe they got laying around there and different stuff on the site?
Well, again, the trustee, the trust would probably have to go talk to the trust.
But I mean, if us has a property on there and the surface, you know, like the judge has ordered by the liability department, you know, how long is it going to be before someone comes in and cleans it up?
Well, again, you all, you all own the property at this time. You're the owners, so I guess that would be up to you. Now, society doesn't have anything to do, doesn't own the land.
Oh, I know, but contacting the trust is what I'm trying to say. We don't have a lease agreement.
Oh.
The trust has a lease agreement.
So you're talking to the wells right next to the house, closest to the house there? And what's the issue there? I haven't been over there.
Well, I mean, it's all, like you said, it's, it's not pumping, it's just all banging, you know?
Yeah.
Do you have the jet, or who's going to clean up the?
The mess.
Yes.
Well, I can go, I can go contact the trust by that and bring the issue up with them and see if they can contact the oil company.
I think we've written a letter. I mean, written the oil company a letter, but I'd have to look in my phone and see.
I mean, I would like to see that cleaned up. I don't even know who even owns it now.
Well, another oil company bought it out from the original one. I, I don't know who the present oil company is at this time, so I think trust, trust would have to look into that.
But I know we signed one of the oil companies.
For the surface.
Yes.
So somehow we can get that, will they come in and clean that up or at least do something?
Okay, this is, I know, well, just wanted to, okay, not one of our actors. Okay, let's move right along to agenda item number eight. Call file, Commissioner Precinct Two discussing vote on interlocal agreement with Karnes County for work on County Road two oh four.
Judges, Karnes County have agreed to, to, I guess, totally reconstruct, repair, catalog, road, which is two oh four, under the Texas law grant. And you just need to enter local agreement with Karnes County, with them to go in and if we do it to pay the road, Wilson County will maintain the road after it's totally meant to be constructed. So I'll make a motion to approve an interlocal agreement with Karnes County to do the work on County Road two oh four.
And I've got the agreement. It's a gentleman agreement, more or less. They paved the road, we maintain the road.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Fowle, second by Commissioner Gómez, that we enter, enter local agreement with Karnes County on County Road two oh two for paving and maintenance. Two oh four, excuse me. Okay. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carried. So, we now agree. Okay. Now, it's the end's time. Agenda item number nine, Leanne Holschek, EMC nine A utility permit. Nine A one permit number six twenty-seven, Sun Springs Water Supply Corporation, Precinct Three, deathboat trail, review and approved. Since one's Precinct Three, one's with Precinct One, I guess we can't do them both at the same time. Who's the county?
Closest one was three dot two. Check it out.
Okay.
First one. I was going to talk about the view, Kenny. Pause or pause or something. Do you need a permit?
Yeah.
Do you need to make a motion on this, or?
Yes.
Don't make a motion. We approve the permit number six twenty-seven.
Motion by Commissioner Haye, second by Commissioner Fowle, we approve the permit number six twenty-seven. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, now we're going to agenda item nine eight two, permit number six twenty-eight, Sun Springs Water Corporation, Precinct One, Whispering Oak Drive, review and approved. Did there, was this lot, didn't have water originally, or?
The one from that one?
No, the one here.
I don't know.
We're having to make a board and something here.
They're going to go under, they're going to move, or?
We go under our review. Is it our review?
It's springing over.
It's right by the spring of July, or under the spring of July, so it's not. The body services to not be to the east side of the road.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gómez, second by Commissioner Haye, that we accept permit six twenty-eight. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Okay, I thought. Okay, now we're going to nine B subdivision, Agent Dawson, Unit six, B one, discussing take action on release of maintenance letter of credit.
And it's the end of the one-year maintenance period, so we're ready to release the letter of credit.
Is this the last unit being crossed, or they still have?
There's one more.
One more?
Yeah.
One more. I, I put it, uh, two or three weeks ago, I'm delighted to make the motion.
Second, motion by Commissioner Haye, excuse me, Wiley.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Haye, to release a maintenance letter of credit. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, here we go. Agenda item number ten, Edwin Baker, Health and Public Safety, enacted the burn ban, discuss and take action.
We're getting there.
Getting there, yes?
Well, I, I would say let's go ahead and put it on because what happens in the next two weeks, we don't know. We keep getting these dry others in, you know, dry air out of the north, some dry factories and that. We're at five, right at five sixty right now. Five fifty is generally when we put it on or start really looking hard at it. The, the holiday weekend coming up is going to make it difficult to permit until next week because of the sharp, you know, not being in the office for two more days after the date. So more or less, we probably won't permit until next Monday. Start permitting next Monday. Because I'm sure, it, it causes a lot of confusion when we put the burn ban on, and then it takes the public a while to get information and to find out about it because it doesn't come out in the paper till Tuesday or Wednesday, and, and so they don't really get notified, you know, kind of in a real time manner. Plus, I have to get latent to fix my phones to where they'll go back to the burn ban.
Okay, so.
I mean, you get enacted today, and we'll start the, our, our, we'll start permitting next month.
Next month?
Yeah.
Okay. And my deal is, or just, okay, whatever, there are some agricultural burn people that are doing something, and they want to, you know, Friday, Saturday?
This week?
This week.
We're not going to, I mean, by not permitting them, they can burn, as far as I'm concerned.
So you won't go into effect till?
Well, yeah, technically it goes into effect today, but we're not going to start permitting or start enforcing permitting until next month.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
I get the question. Can, can we make a motion to do a burn ban effective December the first?
I don't know why you couldn't. I, I don't have a, there's not a, well, I do have a date on here for effective date of the day. Usually, we handle it with procedures out of my office, Commissioner, when we going to start, because we can't, some people will start calling in this week, but it, it won't be many. The majority of them won't start calling in till next week for burning.
I think we need to do one. I'll make a, tell you get a new question, but make it effective today if that works for you. But I think, in my opinion, that we need to do it.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion, Judge, that we enact the burn ban.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gómez, that we enact burn ban effective today. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
One more thing, Judge, just for, just for y'all's benefit. If we're going to restrict any fireworks, that has to be done in the next commissioner's court meeting, December the fourteenth, because statute says it has to be done by fifteenth of December if we're going to restrict any, any fireworks. And that's the skyrockets on sticks and missiles with fins is what we can stop or what we can restrict. And that's how it will be determined, December the fourteenth.
What's that?
Oh, it's two.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number eleven, Jan Hartle, County Treasurer, financial report. Nope, no financial reports, so we're moving right along to agenda item number twelve, Jayden DeButter, Human Resource General Specialist, payroll and personnel changes.
Good morning. Tiffany Mas began working as a corrections officer for the Sheriff's Department, making fourteen thirty-five per hour and thirty-two thousand dollars annually effective November ninth. Ashley Canto began working as a dispatcher for the Sheriff's Department, making fifteen thirty-eight per hour and thirty-two thousand dollars annually effective November sixteenth. And Erica Winterland began working as a part-time tax customer service specialist for the tax office, making twelve ninety-eight per hour effective November seventeenth. Amelia Pointis resigned from his position as a corrections officer at the Sheriff's Department effective December fourth. And Travis Wiley resigned from his position as a mechanic for the Sheriff's Department effective November thirtieth.
Can I have that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving right along, we're doing well now. Okay, agenda item thirteen, Brenda Trevino, County Auditor. That's real Trevino.
That's, that's me.
Okay. You have a financial report, just bills?
Just bills.
Just bills.
And the total bills for this, payables is five hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Included in this, the only really item of mention of the substantial cost is our U-Vote equipment. You had already approved previously during Michelle with the grant funds and the county paying a portion of it, but we're paying half of that right now.
We're paying our half of it right now, or we're paying?
We're paying half of the invoice amount in order to get the equipment.
Have we got the hubbub grant?
Yes.
We've got it in hand, we already got it?
Yes.
Okay.
How much is the part that we're paying?
Hang on.
Um, it's split up in two different sections, so, Commissioner Wiley, I'm sorry, he don't have this in front of you, but in, under the grant funds, let me pull it up right here. County part right now is forty thousand, two ninety-three, eighty-three, and then, and then in the grant, uh, I don't know if I can find it. Find nineteen.
It's too complicated on words.
No, 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 it's just in a different fund. I'm just pulling it out right quick. One hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, $109,790 with grant money. That's on page 10. And then once the, uh, once the equipment is received, installed, et cetera, everything's working good, then, uh, we'll pay the remaining balance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, I can put a copy of this in your box as well for you.
Thank you.
Not that anything good ever came of COVID, but it helped with voting. I was making a motion. Motion by Commissioner Hyde.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gomez, that we approve the bills, is there any more questions or discussing or anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we get to the most important agenda item of them all, adjournment at 10:11.